To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ballot roll call started on my right.
Counselor person Josh Turner.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselor person Craig Anderson.
Counselor person Jeremiah Olgin.
Brent Myers wishes he could be here.
He doesn't, just texting him coming in. He's not happy.
Anything to approve of tonight's agenda? Anything else from staff?
Nope.
Not today.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That'll take us to the regular meeting minutes on February 9th, 2021. Looking for approval of that. Uh, well, we have motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second then.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that also carries. That bases to accounts payable. We have additional listed there. Any questions on that? You can ask finance director Tyler.
Pretty sure Dave Weidholt said he wanted to donate his services for removing trains, so I'm not sure why we keep getting them checked. We're gonna miss something.
I want you guys to get some action in there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second? We have a motion and a second to approve the accounts payable. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Now, before we get into motions, dear own business, we have a guest speaker tonight. We have most of the county sheriff, Captain Lawrence in here. If you'd like to.
You really have to be quick with these people in front of the meetings, so they have to sit through the whole meeting and then get their business.
I'm used to sitting through a lot of long.
I bet.
Shortens off those presentations.
Right, yeah. I'm gonna hand some stuff out here to you. I'm gonna talk from you might have to start memorizing any other like that. I'll pick up whatever's left over. How many folks could be here, but? As it's going around. It's nice to be here, it's nice to be out of the office. It's nice to be able to see real people instead of looking at people on a screen. Um, it's been. Although, throw it out to everyone. Uh, thank you. So what I would like to take a look at first is the one that's got the pictures on in front of it. We have had a host of changes within our office. So the first page, the front back, just kind of fun stuff, a lot of pictures of our people. I don't know if you've seen anything. Do not. Um, then the page three, um, just kind of, it's somewhat hard to read. I'm not expecting to read it. But basically what the idea there was to show you the organization's heart of our office. We went through a kind of mini restructuring in the office just to kind of take care of some problems we've been having as far as getting some things done and planning for the future, strategic planning and all that. Um, so, uh, the main thing, I think, is there's basically two sides of our office. We're not like, uh, you know, uh, sheriffs are just a different, different breed of law enforcement since because we are required by statute to do law enforcement work, which you're familiar with, but we also are required by statute to do detention side of the office. And that's what becomes our two sides. So we got the two chief deputies, Chief Deputy Woleski and Chief Deputy Howard. The two sides are split. And the next page is, I'll kind of get into more of why I'm here and one part of it. So we get to page four. Um, we thought it would be just easiest to kind of re-reduce ourselves. So myself, Chief Deputy Woleski, you're familiar with him, been down and doing the contracts and things like that the last several years. And then we come to our first change. We had a sudden retirement in our patrol division from Dave Sasky. Uh, he got a really sweet deal and an early retirement thing and a nice job, uh, second career, basically. And, uh, you know, it surprised all of us. He came down on Sunday, called me on Sunday, which is not normal. Um, and then he said, I need to see you, and he wouldn't tell me why. And I'm like, well, I'm not letting you come to my house, because I don't know what's going on. So we met out here at Bear King Park. And he told me he was leaving and he had this really great deal with actually a family member. Um, boom, he was gone, so we had to start promoting people. So Chris Wallace is the first, uh, change, uh, at the bottom of page four there. He is the new patrol captain. Uh, he is trying to get around and make all the meetings to all the townships and all the cities. I don't believe he's been here yet. Um, but I know it's on his list of things to do. Chris has been in our office for a number of years. His last assignment, hired to patrol captain, was as a sergeant in our emergency management training division. Um, so he was actually the deputy emergency manager under Mike Bromberg up until we moved him over to patrol division. So, uh, his, uh, for that, just another piece of nugget of his career, longtime K-9 officer and K-9 deputy for our office. Uh, we can slide over to page five. Next one over, and that's where the changes really start happening. Um, so we had a position that we had been using to cover a bunch of different things at the deputy level. And, um, some of it was groundwork and, and we were just having trouble making it all fit within the office, and we knew we needed to do the restructure. We, one of the things we had was, uh, in Sasky's time, all the way back to my time when I was patrol captain, patrol captain was getting walked down with so many other things besides being the patrol captain and handling, uh, the work that he needs to do, which is managing the people in the office, which is our biggest division in the sheriff's office on the law enforcement side. So, uh, what we wanted to do was create an administrative captain position. And that administrative captain would take all these, uh, all the extra work on audits and, and contracting work and, and agreements with, uh, doing everything from bidding for cars and getting rid of cars and selling them and all the stuff that was keeping the patrol captain basically tied down in the office and moving all of that along with some things from the chief deputy, from Terry Woleski's position. Um, and then also some things away from Scott Behrens in the investigative area. And we put that all in place. And Tim Parkin is our new captain in administrative services. Uh, he's supervising, uh, the maintenance guys, the vehicle maintenance guys and a few other folks in the office. Um, but bulk of his work is inside, working on our hiring. We're, uh, going through a lot of changes and retirements, as I mentioned. Uh, we've got six deputies out there right now, most ever in our office at one time in field training. Um, and it's just been a constant evolution as we move forward. So Captain Parkin is off and running in that position. He will likely be joining Captain or Chief Deputy Woleski this year as we start talking with you about, uh, the next contract, um, that we have. So that's when you'll probably have your first experience with Tim Parkin. Uh, he's got a really great, uh, uh, career and do a lot of neat things for us. The next one is John Jacobson. Um, so we had another retirement that kind of partly surprised us. We knew it was going to be in the next year or so, and that was Captain Vince Scheckel retired. Vince had been, again, a long time guy in our office in a lot of different positions. He was most recently in charge of the crime enforcement team, uh, which is the Southeast Minnesota narcotics team. Uh, 21 officers from everywhere across the region. And, uh, our office has been, uh, holding the manager position of that as long as I can remember, but actually back to when it first started as a drug task force and game task force, and that's continuing to evolve. So Vince left and, uh, it worked out the way we kind of did some shuffling that we took John Jacobson from his sergeant position in civil warrants, put him out to the emergency operations center and, uh, training area, uh, because he had all the, all the needs. And then took Mike Bromberg and made a complete switch on him from emergency manager, where he had been for, what, probably 15 years into the crime enforcement team. So we did a quick kind of shell game, moving around with people, and, and that's where they ended up. So Captain John Jacobson, I expect also to make his rounds to certainly come to the cities and visit with you because he is your emergency manager as well as ours and very important for that. And then Kelly Lee, which is a Stewartville resident or sometimes Stewartville resident. She's dead in Rochester. Uh, her kids go to Stewartville. Kelly is the deputy emergency manager and now the emergency manager in training. Um, he's sergeant, we know. So, uh, Tim Parkin, John Jacobson, Scott Behrens continues as our investigator captain. Um, and then also our PIO, public information officer for us. Uh, and then still involved in our emergency, or the investigations area and then court security, which, uh, is really making some changes because next week we open a brand new courtroom, uh, probably the biggest courtroom in Southeast Minnesota, but it's going to be a COVID-friendly courtroom and it's going to be in a whole different building. So our government security, court security people are going to be tasked with more challenges starting next week. And then Mike Bromberg at the bottom of the page here is the crime enforcement team. Then you can go in for all of his work in emergency management. Next page, page number six, is, uh, the detention side of the office led by Chief Deputy Brian Howard. And then Captain Adams and Captain Teszler, longtime detention captains in their positions for probably 15 years at least. And then at the bottom is another new change. Um, so the law enforcement side, they took that deputy position, created it into a captain spot. The amount of money really wasn't all that significant in that change. Um, so we didn't add an FTE, which the board liked a lot. Uh, we did the same thing on the law enforcement detention side. We merged a couple of sergeant positions, uh, that were doing day-to-day Monday through Friday stuff, uh, for courts and for booking and put them together and creating a captain position. Basically do the same thing. There is all kinds of extra work, audits, department corrections. I just saw a news story this morning from Carol, Illinois, of the city saying they're going to rewrite the entire jail administration book that's been in place in Minnesota since 1905. And, uh, this is going to be a big challenge for captain reps and all of the work that we need to do there to comply with all of the standards that are out there, whether it's national standards or statewide. Um, we just needed somebody to start taking those on. As well as like, like on the law enforcement side, the hiring processes and promotional processes are just becoming more and more of a process for us within the office. So both are all our new faces and new places and a whole bunch of changes. The rest of the document, most of it you probably already know. Um, but just some other background information on what each division is doing and, and so on and so forth. So that's, that's our update on the office and the restructure that we did. We have two other things we're doing, uh, that's been approved. We're just working through with our civil service commission now as part of the restructure is the, uh, we had on the law enforcement side, patrol division, four people known as active duty sergeants. They're going to become corporals with basically promoted positions. Um, and then, uh, they will be second in command as they are now, but we'll just give them a rank instead of the active duty sergeant, which is how we have it on the law, the detention side. They've got corporals in detention for, again, as I can remember. Um, so just kind of making some normal steps there, making things look the same. And then we've created a lieutenant position in the, which we don't have at all. We've never had a lieutenant in our office. It goes from sergeants to captains. We're now going to have a lieutenant in our, uh, office, and that's going to be what is currently the sergeant's position in investigations. So we're just making a sergeant a lieutenant and, uh, you know, go on from there. So it's really not going to change the job. It's just making the, the, what he does, or she, clearly it's a he, Jim Schuler, that what he does is actually more than what your average sergeant is expected to do on a daily basis, weekly and, and, well, every day of the year, actually. So that's the, uh, some of the other changes too that we're still working on because we've got to get some of the new, uh, language for civil service, these positions in place. And actually, we have a meeting on Friday to nail that all down. So now, I'll have to go to the other document. I'm not going to go through all this either. I'm just going to highlight a few things. You can read more of this later. Uh, this document is called the eight can't wait. And it's a, it's something that came out of, uh, some of the turmoil that was going on last year, both nationally and statewide and locally as well. Community groups that were challenging all law enforcement to answer the eight questions that they've, they put out there from last summer. The first one, man choke holds, strangle holds, um, unless deadly force, I mean, that's what we've been for a long time. We've never taught what they, people were calling was the choke hold. Uh, as long as I've been, we've done other things, um, but it's never been, has been described in the media as a choke hold. So, um, right now, it's only a case of, uh, deadly force, which actually is a new statute that we're trying to work out now. Um, all law enforcement got, uh, a new statute that was passed last November, December. Um, and we're all trying to figure out how to go with that. Um, that was easy. We didn't have to worry about that because we weren't doing it. Required de-escalation, that was again, one of these ones where when they asked us the question, well, what do you do about de-escalation? Well, we've been doing it since 2007. The training with our CIT, crisis intervention training, has been going on continuously for that, uh, both ourselves and believe our PD are well over half, if not closer to 70 or even 90% trained in, in CIT for, at least for our posts on the street. Um, and basically what that is, is it's a way of processing people in crisis and finding ways to deal with whatever's going on, slowing things down, waiting. And again, we've been doing it for quite a number of years, so we can check that box and say, yeah, problem or are you on it? Uh, requiring warning before shooting. Uh, I make note on my own here, this is not about a warning shot. This is a warning, verbal warning, telling people, you know, to, to react and do something. And, uh, again, that's been part of our requirements for a very long time. Uh, so no, no big changes there for us. Number four, requiring exhausting all other means before shooting. Again, more of a de-escalation process. Again, same kind of thing. Um, we're just, we've been doing it for so long. Um, CIT training, uh, with the state legislature and the Minnesota post court, which is post stands for police officer standards and training, have had requirements added in the last few years, and we've been complying with all of those. Um, even in regards to the most recent changes from, um, from last year or the year before of bias, uh, training with implicit and explicit bias, as well as the diversity and other, again, de-escalation training. So again, we've been doing this stuff, but it wasn't any big shocker to it, us. It was, uh, you know, okay, let's just check ourselves and see how we're doing, and we're doing it. So, uh, again, we can move on. Number five, duty to intervene. Um, you know, we've all seen the videos from Minneapolis, uh, mixed back from last year, and, uh, you could question some of what the officers were doing, and a lot of people have. Uh, one of the questions that came out of that was, why didn't the other officers stop what was going on when they saw the individual in distress? Um, yeah, can't disagree with that. Um, and we had the duty to intervene in our policies for as long as I can remember. Um, we have a system within our office and post sheriff's offices across the state. I know it's probably been 10 or, yeah, maybe at least 10 years ago now. We adopted a program called Lexipol. Lexipol is a really great program. It does a bunch of things for us. It, it helps us form our, our policies statewide. So our policies on use of force are going to look very similar to what Dodge County, Monona County, or, uh, Koochiching County, or wherever you want to go in the state. Our policies are going to look very much the same, uh, which is very helpful when it comes to, uh, things like this in the media and even questioning things in court, so on and so forth. Um, so Lexipol allows us to formulate those policies. It has legal backgrounds, so there's, uh, legal researchers that are able to not only formulate our policies, they read the way the statutes want them to read, but they also look at best practices across the country. This is a company out of California that has people that do all that work. We don't have people that can do that work. We don't have attorneys on staff in our office do that. We have a county attorney's office, but they don't have time to do those things for us either. So Lexipol is just a great, um, system that allows us to do it. And then it sends out the policies to us. We get those policies, they're, they're reviewed. Each deputy has to go through and accept it, meaning that they've read it, they understand it. And then we have what's called daily training bulletins. It's not every day of the month, uh, but basically it equates to about every day that a deputy would work per month. They'll have one question on any one of our policies, but certainly our key policies, that they have to read a scenario, go through it and answer questions about it and pass a little quiz before they can move on. So, uh, it's a system that's just, I, I can't imagine us doing anything differently. Um, and allows us to do a lot of, of great work, again, to be sure that our deputies are, are understanding the policy and then hopefully, as we expect them, to put it in practice. Number six, banning shooting at vehicles. Again, policy's been in our books again for a, a number of years. I can't even think of when it was first put in place. I know I always never taught that I could shoot at a vehicle and I did it for 30 some years, so, um, again, something was really easy for us to answer. Number seven, use of force continuum. Um, some would say it's a response to resistance. So if the individual's resisting, what is our response to what they're doing? Um, it's called a lot of different things across the country. And our policy of training, again, ways, those force options that the state statute requires us to do and looking at the totality of all the circumstances around it, both the individual, uh, the deputies might be dealing with, as well as the deputies', um, stats, as what, what are they? Are they, is it one of our, not knocking any females or anything in this, but if it's one of our females who's, you know, maybe 5'7" and, and 130 pounds, or is it one of our 225 pound deputies that's six foot three? Um, they have a different way of looking at things and they should have a different way of responding, ability to do those things. So looking at all of those things is what our policy's done. And, and our back as I can remember, even when I served up in Hennepin County, we had, uh, policies that talked about use of force and how to go about their things. And then the last one, the eight can't wait, uh, requiring comprehensive reporting, uh, looking at our use of force, do we, you know, are we putting our use of force out there? Are deputies using it appropriately? Um, when I was in training as a sergeant back in really 2000s, that was one of the things I put in place. I'm very, very in tune with what we did back then because we were just adding TASER. We had just added the ASK. We had, adding all these new tools pepper sprayed, and we didn't have any way of tracking to see, okay, I got all this stuff. Are they using, are they using it at appropriate times? And we've been tracking that since, since then, so the last 21 years time. No, for sure, we've been doing it because I put it in place when I was in training division. So again, um, we, we look at this whole eight can't wait. If you've ever heard of it, it's something, I just wanted to make sure that all of our cities where we have primary law enforcement responsibilities, if you knew this, um, and were aware of this, and if there's any, if there are any questions about it, we'd be happy to talk more about it in depth. Um, and, uh, whether it's talking to me or talking to use of force instructors or training staff, we certainly can do that. Okay, just a few other little updates, and I will take some questions if you haven't, but I do want to cover some of the other things. Um, just about COVID in our office. We've had COVID. We handled it, I think, extremely well. Staff have done a great job of it. We've had some people sick, uh, both ADC and LAC. I think the biggest victory for me as I look at it as the administrative side of things is our detention center has had, I don't think, maybe half a dozen total, um, detainees that have gotten sick. So that's management by our medical staff and all our deputies, keeping people separate down there. We do have someone that's not feeling well, whatever the case may be. They've done a fantastic job of keeping it out. If you've been in touch with anything related to corrections or detention in the state, the state has, the state prison system has had entire prison buildings, uh, affected by COVID with the whole thing in lockdown with, and not just detainees, but their staff. Uh, even here locally, FMC has had a couple of pretty significant spikes with COVID. And, uh, you know, knock on wood, whoever it is, um, staff has done a really great job and all the credit goes to them. They've done a really nice job of that. Um, but some of the things that affected, like COVID affected as well as Floyd death affected, um, and whatever we're looking at, courts is one of it. Um, courts were shut down for a period of time. Uh, so we were, as Mark Ostrom, our county attorney, has said a few times, um, upwards as high as I've heard him say, 5,000, 5,500 hearings behind schedule. They had put 5,500 hearings off to the side, hearing just the ones that needed to come in, the guys, the people arrested at night, come in with new charges. They got it, it heard right away because statutes and laws require us to do that as soon as possible, but other hearings, they've been putting them off, including trials. Uh, I think the last comp I, we had, there was at least nine or 10 individuals in our jail right now charged with murder, and those trials are waiting, and they should be heard and we should be getting to those, but we haven't been able to. So that's going to be the, one of the next big tasks to us, as I said. They're opening this new courtroom next, not next week, yeah, this next week, March 1st, I believe, because they're going to have to start their first hearings over there. Um, and, uh, you know, it's going to be a challenge to get all that caught up, get those things done. And then of course, when people are expected to go to court and they don't show up to court, it begets a warrant. Sheriff's are required by state statute to manage the warrants, work with courts to handle all of that. That's going to be another huge task on our staff to get that work done and to start finding those folks and getting them to be a combo for the crimes or whatever the situations were that they, they, they ended up having to go to court in the first place. So a new courtroom is going to help, but it's going to also challenge us because it's going to start pushing more cases out. And then by 1st of May, I believe it's now set that the chief justice in the state is saying that they're going to go full speed and slow courtrooms again. So it's going to still have COVID challenges, but we're going to see where it goes with us. So with that and the new courtroom, we did add six deputies last year, brand new positions to manage that new courtroom and the new court area across the street because we couldn't take the people in the, the current building and just let them, you know, try to share jobs. It just wasn't going to work. We had to do security screening, making sure nobody ran into anything that's, that's dangerous or harmful. And so we added three new law enforcement deputies and three new utility or, or, I'm sorry, those are utility deputies we call, because they're going to work in all kinds of areas. And then three new detention deputies to handle all of those things that are going on. So that's a lot of what we're looking at, all of the kind of hubs around what we plan on the court. And then the other two things that's affecting and potentially could affect all of the law enforcement across the state is the George Floyd heard trial, as that starts up here on March 8th. Um, we saw, we had some challenges down here in Rochester and Olmsted County, primarily in Rochester. Um, and it just based off of what happened last year in Minneapolis. Um, and sheriffs are asking for additional support. Probably heard already, the governor has asked for the legislature to approve additional monies to support, but they're anticipating might need to be done in Minneapolis during the trial around metro area. Um, and so we're tracking that. They put out the call, we've answered it, we're waiting to hear what they might need and what we can provide. But again, we have to be sure, and I want to make this assurance very strong to all of you, that we are certainly not going to send, you know, half the office up there to help them and clean things and say, oh, we can't do stuff back down here. No, we're not going to do that. We've got a very good plan, limited as much as we can to send people up there if it happens, but we're certainly going to stay back home and take care of home because, you know, that's obviously our priority. So, uh, know that we're thinking of that, but I just wanted to have that bit of statement to you as well. Another option, other issue that sort of could affect us statewide is the line two pipeline in northern Minnesota. So the northern tier of counties are already, already in that situation where those sheriffs up there, some of those sheriff's offices have 10 people, tops. That's it. And that's including the sheriff. Uh, they don't have the staff to handle 200, 300, 400, 1,000 protesters that might come like we saw at DAPL a few years ago in North Dakota. So again, that's another challenge that we are looking at, sheriffs across the state are, as to how do we help and support those guys if they're needing that kind of help? So again, it's another balancing item. We're going to have to deal with this coming year and end of the summer until that project is done. But, uh, again, it's, it's a situation called mutually aid. It's law enforcement helps each other out and do what we can. But again, I want to assure you as much as possible, everybody out there, that we are certainly going to take care of home. That's our number one priority and doing that. The last thing that I have for you is opioids and prescription drugs still remain a huge challenge for us here. And so I say it to you and I say it to the folks out there that are watching, certainly here, um, we got to do something. We got to, we got to keep working on it. Uh, we have the prescription drug takeback box. We, we weren't able to last year in April, April and October to do our drug takeback day, and we're likely not going to be able to do it again this year. Uh, that's usually been a Saturday where we team up Mayo and ONC and the Summer Valley Medical Society and accept all kinds of prescription drugs that people get. And I'm telling you, we fill huge dumpsters full of, of, with, with old prescriptions. get and I'm telling you we fill huge dumpsters full of with old prescription drugs so if people have prescription drugs at home your relative passed away or you've had a surgery and you're not using those drugs and you do not belong in your home people will go to your home and burglarize it sell it in your home they'll go to your cabinet take some pills out of your cabinet we are seeing this all over the place it's getting in our schools we need people to bring their drugs to the government center it's it's right in the front door of the detention center where the take back box is it's real easy we'll put out every now and again we'll put out reminders on our Facebook page please look for that and share that I know you guys do I really appreciate that we just gotta continue and push that message out there with the opioids and the other prescription drugs that are just not safe in our communities at all so are there any other option too someone asked me this I think in our open the other night isn't there another option yes there is you can go to your drugstore I don't know what his call or should I research it and I forgot to do that it just came to me out but there is a a concoction it's a bag it's something you can buy you can put drugs in there and it's a solution and I think you add some water to it and it just dissolves the drugs and they're harmless and then you can throw them in the garbage but you can't throw the prescription drugs in the garbage it's you know or down drain in the water because they can't filter all of those drugs out of the water system so not that there's somebody there probably testing it like that all the time but if everybody kept doing that then we'd have a serious problem so[689.73] Do what all you can, appreciate the time, and if you have questions.
I have one regarding the use of force changes from that one that we were all on for the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association. Have you heard any more? There's a lot of talk after that of the CLEOs and everybody trying to talk to legislators to try to just delay it so it can't continue progress.
Yes, I'm on the State Sheriff's Association Legislative Committee, and they've been working hard at it the last two days since last week when we, yeah, so Monday, Tuesday. I think they already did some work on Friday already. But yeah, we're trying to get it delayed. What it was, folks, is we, the legislature was together during one of the callback sessions, I think it was November, and they were huddling up and they wanted to do something about changing the deadly force statute for the state of Minnesota. And it was gonna be a big lift. And we agreed, the Sheriff's Association and the Chiefs of Police, with Minnesota Peace and Police Officers Association, which is a, I guess, fraternal organization for all law enforcement in the state. I've been a member as long as I can remember. And MP, so we call it MPPOA, Minnesota Peace and Police Officers Association. MPPOA has what's called a legal defense fund. They have attorneys on retainer, basically. And so we said, Chiefs and the sheriffs said, let's let MPPOA work on this with their attorneys and see how kind of compromise they want. Well, it went to work and it came out, and it's really challenging for law enforcement right now. I'll tell you quite bluntly that I'm very worried for our people. They're gonna make some decisions that they have to make. And I've been in some of these spots throughout my career where when you're faced with a decision that you have a half a second or less to make that decision, the statute which required deputies to be specific about why they didn't use less lethal options before they used deadly force. And that is, in my opinion, way too high a bar to go to. There's some other stuff in there too, but that to me is the one that is, needs to have further conversation, and it didn't get enough conversation. We need to slow this thing down, so.
I wouldn't be surprised if Chief Law Enforcement Officers started saying absolutely no foot chases, absolutely no foot chases. We're not responding to any suicidal people unless there's another person in danger in that situation. Because you're really, the way it is right now, and I know it's still gonna get molded, but holy cow, you talk about a heavy lift, and you throw on a 25-year-old out there and expecting nobody Superman, you just.
Let me give you this analogy. This, I'll try not to go too long on this, but as a legislative member of our committee, I was asked to join with Attorney General and the Department of Public Safety Commissioner in 2019 in the summer. And we worked all of 2000, yeah, all of 2019 into this time of last year, 2020, on a working group called Working Group. We studied deadly force encounters with law enforcement. And with that Working Group, one of the first sessions, the first session was put on hold because of an hour and a half protest, and we hadn't done anything. So we dealt with that. But then later on in the day, Chief Brad Wyes, who's the, was very wise that day, he was the chief of Coon Rapids PD, he came in and he painted a very good picture. I just love this picture. He says, I've got a 22-year-old deputy who just came out of college, just got off of FTO, and he is called to the emergency room for an individual who's out of control and they need law enforcement there. He's breaking stuff, he's doing whatever. The officer will show up, there's security guards there, there's doctors, there's psychologists, there's nurses, there's all these people there, and the only reason that officer is there because he has deadly force. They've got all the other tools, they can do everything else. The only reason is deadly force. And now, and not that we go there saying, this is what we want to do, that's never been it, I've never heard that, I've never been part of that conversation, never been looking to hurt or kill people, just not part of anything I've ever been a part of in all my years. It's 41 of them now. It's just crazy that it's gotten to this. But now, that's the scenario we're in. This 22-year-old officer or deputy is being put into these situations where Sid Mitchell may not be harming himself, I mean, certainly not harming other people, he's just messing up the place. And now we've come in only because we have the deadly force. And then now we've gotta make these split-second decisions, take less than a second. And I always told my dare kids, I'll finish with this on this topic, I always told my dare kids, it takes me two seconds to get into trouble, in other words, into an incident, two hours to do the report if I'm lucky, and two years for the attorneys and the media, no offense, but the terror part. And that's true. Two seconds, two hours, two years, maybe two decades in some cases. And that's, and I'm not complaining, that's the reality of, to put on us this new statute that says, and is red the way it is, and I'm not kidding you, the word is specificity. The deputy, the officer has to be specific in how they use their use of force and did not use less lethal force in a situation before they decided to use their deadly force. That's just too high a bar, you know, so get it off my pulpit. Anyway, thanks for the questions.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
Anything else? Otherwise, it's great to be here, great to see you, great to be out, out of my house, out of my office. So thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Appreciate it. And if there's extras, move the extras in there.
My biggest emotions in general business, and the first item that I know of that would be. Mid Dot Local Road Improvement Project Grant, if you could come on. Road Improvement Grant Application Resolutions of Support. High Force Township and City have an opportunity to apply for Minnesota State Aid Funding through the Mid Dot Local Road Improvement Program, which is based on competitive grant applications for potential projects throughout the state of Minnesota. They have traditionally been awarded and distributed each year to cities, counties and townships based on individual needs and available funding that's in the program. Staff and city engineer have been working with local Olmsted County and High Force Township officials, been working together in supporting a possible grant application, which will be, which would be separate in nature for each respective project. These projects include the base reconstruction and pavement improvements. High Force Township would apply for improvements to 15th Avenue Northeast, which is on the east side of the city. Did you get it?
I think you're next, Sheriff.
Thank you. And the city would apply for improvements to 11th Avenue Northwest, west side of the city, next to Barrigade Park, with the goal of utilizing state funding assistance in moving these projects forward even to completion. Each of these projects would have mutual benefit to the three governmental entities as well as the region for commercial and residential and safety and future economic development opportunities. So the council action required would be on two different ones. It would be to approve or deny a resolution for support for High Force Township Grant Application for Improvements to 15th Avenue Northeast. Do we have a motion?
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one carries. Next one will be to approve or deny a resolution of support for City of Sturford Grant Application for the improvement of 11th Avenue Northwest.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. A second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one also carries. That'll take us on to our next one under motions in general business, which is 2021 CIP Change Order. The masked arm on the signal at the intersection of First Street West and Highway 63 needs to be removed due to safety concerns during the CIP project. This will help aid in the speed of the construction and minimize the time the highway is down the two lanes. Staff is recommending that Elkhorn and City split the cost for this addition. The city's portion would be $1,470.50. This cost covers removal and reconnection of the masked arm and the signal. Council action requested would be to approve or deny the change order to pay half the removal reconnection of the mask. Do we have any discussion, questions?
I got, yeah, I'm actually, Sean, maybe you can answer generally, but I guess my question on this is, you know, they fluff it up by saying, boy, if we pay half of this, it's gonna speed things up and it's gonna make it safer for everybody. To me, I think that's kind of their deal, like they should be, I'm not saying I'm against paying it, so I'd probably end up voting for it, but I do want to just be heard on this. Why would we pay half of that if that's their deal? And then when I look at the change request, change in contract time, after they talk about how this is gonna speed everything up and make it so much safer, but there's no change in any of the working days. So it seems to me like they just oversaw it, now they just don't want to pay for it. Well, we forgot the billion for it already, so we just want you to pay half. Am I accurate on that, or am I missing something?
Yeah, somewhat. It was an oversight on both sides a little bit. It wasn't specified in the plans, and they overlooked it at the time, and we figured it was small enough, it'd been great to work with through things, and we jockeyed things back and forth, helping us out with other things that don't even get reported, that we, in the faith of working through it, we just.
Yeah, I mean, I remember that one, I asked him earlier too, that you guys have a pretty good working relationship, and for the most part, it's really worked out well, but both ways, which, which tends to lead me towards that, but it, it's just, it's always one thing after another on all these, and it seems like every single time, somebody wants another free handout from the government, and oh my goodness, we can't, the government's not supposed to use, hand out free stuff all the time.
Elkhorn did come to the meeting, Sean and I sat down with them, and they did say, yeah, we're going to, we'll take it, we, we will pay for it because it's safer for We know, you know, we like our relationship too, and we, you know, they were willing to bring it forward and not just try and push it at us, saying, no, you have to pay it and work together on it, like they have for everything on the project.
Well, I appreciate that. Certainly.
Bill?
The other thing I talked about is while the overall project isn't shortened, we think it will shorten just then, and since that's a main business block, we just want them in and out of there as quick.
Do you guys even, if you specify, how long do you think that they'd have to close it down to redo those sewage lines or whatever it may be? It's like, we're about.
It'll be a week.
Okay, that sounds about.
If they had to work around that masked arm.
And the light will still function because of the side light, I'm guessing, or will they have to put out temporary?
They'll have to be a stop sign on first traffic going westbound to use, and then it'll be flashing red, basically.
All right, oh, I've entered, I feel better, thanks.
Any other questions or discussion on that? If not, I'll give a motion to approve or deny the change order to pay half the removal reconnection of the masked signal arm.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one carries. Next will take us to liquor license approval. City has received an application from Stewie Brothers Incorporated for off-sale, on-sale and Sunday liquor license for Two Brothers Bar and Grill, 101 10th Street Northwest. In order to comply with the liquor license regulations, they will be giving up their off-sale, on-sale, off-sale combination license at the Down Under Bar and Grill. Now, this will also be with all proper staff.
Correct, correct, we're just trying to save them some time. So once the application, they're waiting back on some of their state requirements once we have that, then I'll forward it on to Deputy Owens and then Derek Ferguson for their approval, and then send it on to the state.
So tonight's my bad of being educated on things, because clearly I don't, I'm not educated on anything. How come they have to get rid of their, their off-sale at their other location?
There's a state requirement that you can't hold to, to off-sale license, so I'm waiting to hear back from the state, so unless, if the state comes back and said, no, they're fine, then they can keep it. But that would be the one, they have a combination license at the DU, so that would be the one that they would have to give up.
But it just seems, it must be the combination of the on-sale, off-sale, because clearly there's people that own multiple liquor stores and that they have licensing on all of them, so it just seems to be another strange oddity in yet another state statute.
There you go. Okay, the council action request will be to approve liquor license applications listed above, subject to proper, all proper applications.
I'll move on that.
With a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one also carries. That'll take us on to the next one, which is, again, Two Brothers Bar and Grill. Sturford Fire Relief Association Gambling Program. The Sturford Fire Relief Association is seeking approval for a charitable gambling license to conduct gambling activity, pull tabs at Two Brothers Bar and Grill, 101 10th Street Northwest. As per state statute, the city council must approve the license application prior to submitting to the Minnesota Gambling Control Board. So to approve a resolution, 2021 bash resolution approving the Sturford Fire Relief Association's request for a charitable gambling license at Two Brothers Bar and Grill.
It's highly likely that I'll be making donations to that situation, so I'll make a motion to approve that as well.
There you go. We got a motion, we got a second.
I'll say it again.
We got seconds all over, it looks like you're all gonna be contributing. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Next one is VFW Memorial Park. We are partnering with our local VFW to build a memorial park restroom facility. The VFW is funding $18,000 plus electrical towards the facility. The total facility cost is $29,161. The city's portion of the project is $11,161. There may be some small additional costs that come up, so the city has agreed to fund up to $18,000 to not exceed a 50-50 split. Funds for the project, funds from the project capital, 455, are being used to fund this project. They were currently unallocated for 2021. The 2021 budget is $14,000 with reserved funds available if needed. So the council action request would be to approve or deny the use of these funds for the VFW Memorial Restroom Facilities. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one carries. That takes us on to Mayor, Staff and Consultant Boards. Tonight's the mayor's report. The city would like to send their sympathies to the families of June Meyer, Elaine Gilbertson, LeAnn Matson, Don Creed, Don Creed Ford, wow, Harvey Nash, Harvey Nash.
That was today.
Really?
The funeral was today.
Betty Black, the owner of Gross Eat, Vernon Johnson, and Ron Jiggle. Like to send out a happy 24th birthday to Lexi? You haven't aged a bit since the last time. It's National FFA Week. Congratulations to all the students who continue to share the story of agriculture. We all know agriculture is part of our daily life, from the food we eat, to the clothes we wear, to the fuel we burn, to the pharmaceuticals we use. Our community has thrived because of our agriculture neighbors, and we are always grateful for them. So if you see a farmer, shake his hand. What are you looking at, Greg?
There's a hand sanitizer.
Friday night fish fries back at the Legion. Stop out, support the veterans, you can either dine in or carry out. It's a very good fish fry. That's all I've got for tonight. That'll take us on to the city administrative report.
I'm reporting your packet, most grief of one as I've had in a long, long time, and so nothing to add. Just thank you for the current services of Deputy Owens. He's not only helped with our complaint issues, but he's helped us, in fact, today with administrative and ordinance items too, so thank you for that.
Any questions for city minister? All right, thanks, Bill, thanks for the half shingle on that one. Finance Director, Carla?
Um, just a quick update, we got some numbers back from already. They had the, all of the monies that, from the second round of CARES Act funds that went to the county. And we were lucky enough that there were multiple businesses within Stewartville city limits that had gotten funds, which equaled over $100,000. I did just some numbers of, so based on Olmsted County and our population, we're about 4% of the population, and we received back about 4% of the funds, so it's okay.
Any questions for Carla? All right, thank you, Carla. Public Works Director, Sean?
I have reports in there now. I will award the bids then at the acceptance of the VFW Memorial Park. I'll get ahold of those guys tomorrow and start getting the schedule, but that wouldn't take place till spring coming, so.
I have a quick question. Number one, did anybody complain about that, when we have snow, like that, to me, was a lot more than I expected on Sunday afternoon, and like you even mentioned in here, you keep the arteries open and then you come back and clean everything? I thought you guys did a fantastic job. Did anybody complain about that?
We have a couple complaints, throwing it up on the sidewalks, and they're unhappy about cleaning the sidewalks. They were nice complaints, if the rest of it, I mean, they were very courteous, yeah, courteous as they were, just concerns.
I thought you guys did a good job. Are the cameras working out at the, at the brush dump? And if so, there, apparently there was a heater that somebody put out there at the dock, and somebody destroyed it, stole the propane or something or another?
Jason and I went through the footage out there, the one camera, they've had trouble getting going, and that's the bullet camera to get the license plates. We did identify the vehicle, but from a distance, we couldn't pull the license plate or we couldn't pull anything off it, and we saw that a car that seven something that night, that you can see, he put it in his front seat, but we didn't have the bullet camera going, and they will be here tomorrow to get that bullet camera up and go. If we'd have had that, we'd probably have been able to identify.
That's good, I didn't know if we were up and running or not. I shouldn't be surprised, given my line of work, like, come on. I mean, somebody, you know, you've got this nice situation where people with cats, they bring a heater out there just to help each other out, and somebody still has to go steal it.
They did salvage the heater, so they just had to get it to empty cellar, but they did get the heater put back together from what I understand, used the signal heater.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sean? All right, thanks, Sean. Guys are doing a good job. City Engineer, Jenny, you got a report?
Um, I've been working on getting all our IP grants put together, getting things together there, working and trying to keep business going through the summer and this year's construction, so if you have any questions, let me know.
We're gonna have enough to keep you busy for the year?
I've been spending Tuesdays more than just mornings here. It's, it might be all days now.
Thank you, Jennifer, for all your hard work. Library Director, Nate?
Um, relatively boring report, this one. You know, one of the, one of the hardest bits and everything is we have no photographic evidence, we just, people say, oh, we really liked it, and I'm like, could I get a picture? Because that'd be great, you know. Adultwood everything is going great, uh, going really well. Mr. Mayor, proud to say that your mother was the first person to complete the program this year. She's eighty-four years.
She's eighty-seven, she's not what I asked to do.
Just, she just zipped right through that line, I agree, and, uh.
I should check and see if she's really reading that stuff.
Let's go.
Check them all, throw them back in the grounds.
Uh, and I, in my March report, I hope to have a lot more detail with finalized annual report for 2020, and also our summer program should be pretty well planned out by then, so I should have a lot of news next month to make up for a slow.
Was your February kit there literally hot chocolate bombs, like that they drop into hot milk or hot water?
Yeah, yeah, so, so the deal is, is we, it's, um, so this one was a plastic mold that you could make three bombs in, and then, and so then, like.
I like that sheriff.